Welcome to our January 9, 2024 City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Portman Salva.
Here.
Councilmember Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Approval of the agenda as presented?
Move approval of the agenda as presented?
Support. Any dissension, changes, discussion? There are none. Motion passes. I'd like to take a moment, please stand for a moment of silence for Matt Stew Belski for his service and patriotic duty for the country. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to say happy new year to everyone and welcome to our city chambers. We have three-minute discussion time when you come up to the podium, your name and address, as we have a lot of people that...
Five minutes.
Was it three or five?
Three minutes.
Oh, three.
It's three.
Three.
It's been three minutes.
Westbury's five.
Always had three minutes.
I would give it five minutes. I just want to let everybody know, since we have everybody here, give your name and address and record so the secretary can put it on the minutes for further review. Thank you. Open up the civic announcements. Anyone have any civic announcements out there? A civic announcement from the city council. There are none. Full civic announcements. Now we'll open up public discussion. We can... Anyone who wish to...
Mr. Mayor, can we bring Lawrence Sobson up first? He has to go first.
It's over.
Brett.
All right. I always get nervous at these things. Hey, everyone. My name is Lawrence Sobson. I'm with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Urban and Community Forestry Program. My job essentially is I go around to communities and provide technical, financial, and I provide assistance. I'm a tree guy. I do urban forestry stuff, and I've received multiple calls from concerned citizens here in Hazel Park, and I live in St. Clair Shores, so I'm nice and close, so thought I'd stop by tonight. I just wanted to offer my services as I've been made aware, some of the tree replacement programs that are going on here. I'm not sure about the details and everything. I get these calls a lot, and I get dragged into these meetings and everything, but I would like to make myself available. For Hazel Park, I would like to... I do have some data I brought here tonight just to make you aware. Approximately Hazel Park has about 45 grand a year worth of economic value coming from your public trees, which is relatively low for the size and population. On average, the same-sized communities in Michigan get about 160 grand a year in economic value, and that's through stuff like air pollution mitigation, stormwater mitigation, CO2 uptake, stuff like that. Hazel Park has about 64% impervious surface cover, which is relatively a lot, but that's... I mean, it's very urban area. Of course, it's going to be like that. And I also run the Tree City USA program for the state, and I think Hazel Park was formerly a Tree City USA member, and I know probably right after this, your community members are going to ask and try and recertify Hazel Park as a Tree City USA member. I am here for any sort of assistance with that. It's free. It's easy. I'm more than welcome to help you out. I'm in the middle of applications right now, and I get a million calls every day for it. It's fine. You get a little flag. We celebrate Arbor Day, and I think next year or the year after is the 50th anniversary, so it's going to be a big one. And Arbor Day Foundation, who runs that program nationally, is going to give out a lot of prizes and recognition. I do have also, out of 52 communities that are surveyed by the Forest Service in Oakland County, Hazel Park ranks 51st in canopy cover, which is not great, but it's okay. It leaves a lot of room for improvement there. We definitely can work on that. And I guess the big thing is, this is perfect timing. We just got a bunch of money from Forest Service in order to do work with communities like yours, and we currently are going to have an open request for proposal this summer, probably in July. We have $4.5 million of specifically match-free grant funds for anything urban forestry in communities, and that could be education, tree planting, supplies. You could do it all. And my whole thing is between now and July is preparing communities for that and giving them examples of grants and just really helping them out, because that money is really the gas that gets everything started. And if you really need help, I know communities have a really hard time struggling managing all the paperwork and bureaucratic business of day to day. I do have really good connections with the Oakland Conservation District, which are a nonprofit that could act as a fiduciary for it. Otherwise, the grant allows you to take up to 20% of your ask for funding. Essentially, you get paid someone to manage that grant as well directly, so up to you there. Yeah, I'm a resource, and I'm sure you'll hear plenty from your community members tonight about your public trees and everything. Going forward, I'm sorry, I'm exhausted. It's been a long day. Canton has been driving me crazy, so I've been there all day. But anything you ever need, I'm not far away. It's a 15-minute drive. You're welcome to contact me anytime. I left a couple of cards with your city manager, and there are more cards there in some of the packets you'll probably receive. Emailing me is probably best. I accidentally... I have a government phone. I messed up my password yesterday and wiped my entire phone of everything, so that's been real fun. I gained everything back. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I have a couple. That's okay. Hi, I'm Amanda Nathan. I'm one of the city attorneys and in charge of code enforcement and various special projects. So one of the questions that I have about your grant is that you need to apply for and receive a very significant grant from some of our community partners, but are there certain parameters, such as only being able to plant those trees in public spaces versus... For example, one of the problems that we have is disengagement of the community in terms of residents. Some, I mean, I know there's a lot that do, but quite few don't actually want to have trees planted on their east end. And so in terms of that, where are the grant restrictions with respect to where we can plant those trees, as well as what our requirements would be in terms of, you know, forcing a resident to have a tree, not forcing a resident to have a tree, those types of things? Because we certainly would like to be looking at that, but I guess I would kind of...
Yeah, right now, we just hired a grant coordinator yesterday, so...
It's still in the works.
Yeah, so it's still in the works. We do have the option to do that, but it requires just slightly more paperwork on our backend for private property as well as public property. We usually always... Like, public property, do like, go ahead. We will allow anything.
So to be clear, I mean, looking at the grants you're talking about, you're talking about primarily our public spaces, parks where we would have more autonomy to do that.
Yeah, your green spaces for on your streets and everything, and it also includes... Like, you can include specifically, like, concrete removal if you're going to plant a tree there. So removing that impervious space does count. You opened up a huge can... Yeah.
Clearly, you guys are...
Or replacing a concrete space. I think that's what you're talking about, is replacing concrete space with green space.
If you email me, I could send you what we gave out this past grant season, which just wrapped up, and we just awarded those out. I've been working very closely with the city of East Point that, in my opinion... I've been in this job for two years. The program manager, Kevin Sayers, has been in his position for 20 years, Al Lansing, and he has never worked with East Point after they got into a fight seven years ago. And now East Point has a complete 180, and is really doing things amazing.
They're great.
They're awesome, and...
They're the cohort, so they're interesting.
And we also are working on ordinance changes and stuff like that, so it could literally be anything, inventories. There's a lot of resources available, and we want to... Like, we don't have enough people asking for the money that we really want to give out, so...
And then two more questions.
Yeah.
If you indulge me, with your grants, do you know, because I know you just said it's brand-new, hired the grant coordinator yesterday, do you have any anticipation of what, like, a maximum award would be for a municipality? And then also, number two, do you have any idea, like, would we be working with you to have the trees installed? Would we be paying, like, still working with... We know what our numbers are to install a tree. Like, do you have any ideas on that?
The first one, this past grant season, we only opened up from 10 to 50 grand was the award amount. This next... But we only gave out $200,000. So this next grant award season, where we have all that money, it's going to be a lot more. We essentially, it was only me and Kevin. We didn't have the staff to manage that much money, because he's already inundated with paperwork, and I'm busy working with communities like yourselves. So that is subject to get higher the cap for that. And... Second question? I apologize.
In terms of installation of the trees, would we then... So would the money be awarded, but we'd still be paying our own contractors or our own internal staff to...
It's usually a reimbursement grant, but there is special exceptions and stuff like that. I'm not... That's all subject to change, obviously. Like, we're still getting our letters to people that they got awarded this year. But I do have examples of some of the really good written grants. There's a lot of bad ones this year, but Alex Smith with the Oakland Conservation District is a fantastic resource, who's on our Urban and Community Forestry Council for the state, and he's the manager of that conservation district, so he... Sorry, I swore on TV, but... Okay, anyone else? Sorry. I know that it's probably five minutes, but...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to add that I've been in touch with...
State your name and address.
Oh, I will. Sorry. My name is Megan Cleary, and I own property on 1568 East Granite. And I just wanted to mention that Oakland County Parks, I've been in touch with them as well, and they're willing to partner with DNR to give us a lot of grant money and override certain restrictions or requirements that other communities have to have. Can you hear me? Okay. As a council manager of government, I'm addressing the council tonight to fulfill their obligations as stewards of the policies and ordinances here in Hazel Park. Every day, I take a walk in my neighborhood. I head up Merrill and turn left on Otis. I walk the courts from Kennedy Park all the way to Russell and continue through Scout Park. As a writer who works from home, my walks provide me with mental respite, socialization, and the opportunity to look and wonder at the natural beauty of the tree canopy and all that it harbors, from birds singing in the trees to leaves changing every season. Imagine my despair when I walk down this street now and more than 20 healthy old-growth trees representing 50,000 square feet of tree canopy have been removed. And I'm not the only one who feels this way. You'll see a petition in your packet started by resident Kayla Thrushman with more than 70 signatures and counting, and you'll also have a sampling of the hundreds of comments on social media lamenting this calamitous removal of the tree canopy in Hazel Park. The reason for this wholesale tree removal are cited as safety for residents and liability for the city. This was confirmed on my call yesterday with Ed Klobuchar and Tom Jones at DPW. Yet on that same call, Tom confirmed that only approximately 15 of the 4,000 trees in Hazel Park, or 3%, cause actual structural or property damage. And most sidewalks can easily be replaced in an ADA-compliant fashion without removing a tree or destroying its roots. Another common refrain by the city manager and the council that I've heard is that we're replanting. However, new saplings do not in any way replace the square footage of tree canopy lost from old-growth, healthy, mature trees. City officials also say that an arborist is consulted for all the tree removals. However, when I called J.H. Hunt, the tree removal company contracted with the city in both August and October, I spoke to three different people who all said that they just take orders from HPDPW and that HPDPW makes the determinations. In terms of safety for residents, consider that areas with trees on public property have a 40% greater crime reduction, and students perform better with trees around their schools. For every 10% increase in urban tree canopy, ozone is reduced by between 3% and 7%. Trees remain one of the cheapest, most cost-effective means of drawing excess CO2 at a rate of 21 grams a year and release enough oxygen back into the atmosphere to support two human beings. There's also a 60% reduction in particulates from exhaust fumes in tree-lined streets. And it doesn't take a science degree to realize that in the middle of summer, heat rises off of sidewalks where old-growth trees have been removed. With no replacements or only saplings in their place, studies show this can cause a difference in temperature of up to 22 degrees Fahrenheit. On my recent call, DPW stated that any residents can call him if they have an issue with a particular tree coming down, and he will consider not removing it. He confirmed he is the sole person who determines the removal or not of every single tree in Hazel Park. This petition and these social media comments represent more than 100 residents requesting to stop the tree removals. As a resident, also, I did call and email his office multiple times, asking for a moratorium on tree cutting, and my communications were not answered until a month later, at which time those trees, as well as five others, have been removed. My ask to the city council today is threefold. Number one, stop removal of old-growth, healthy trees, especially in the courts on Otis, until plans can be reassessed with resident input. Number two, complete review of the city plan regarding trees with active resident input. And yes, I am asking to reopen the plan that was created eight years ago or 10 years ago. I'm asking to comply with the city ordinance 1220-015 and appoint the five-person tree board, that's required by your city ordinance, and to create the annual tree report, which reports the number of trees removed and replanted, and make it public. As far as I know, neither of those things exists to this day. More transparency and accountability for tree removal? Consider publishing a Google spreadsheet or other way of tracking tree removals and replanting. And I would actually use that $40,000 from Supak Sutar to hire an independent arborist, not J.H. Hunt, who gets paid $125,000 a year to do tree removal in our city, an increase of $25,000 over 2021 and even more in previous years. And my final request is, as Lawrence talked about, to pursue Tree City USA designation with grants from the state of Michigan, DNR, and Oakland County Parks, both of who said are willing to work with us and excited to help. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi. Bobby Mohica, 1436 East Madge. I'm a longtime Hazel Park resident, about 16 years. I want to... I agree with everything that Megan said. I am dumbfounded about why the removal of the tree canopy seems to be an issue for council, but I'd like to touch on another topic I feel dovetails with the tree canopy decimation in the city, and that is impervious surface. While other communities are working to limit impervious surface in an effort to control stormwater and its environmental impact, it appears Hazel Park has no such concerns. I am dismayed with the development at 348 East Nine Mile, also known as the Hazel Park Urgent Care. It is 100% impervious surface, except for the useless planters that contain only weeds and trash and hold up equally useless rusting metal beams in Hazel Park's favorite shade of beige. Other businesses along the prime Nine Mile corridor that are surrounded by concrete and asphalt are Ink Detroit at 731 East Nine Mile, again, 100% impervious surface, with two more parking lots adjacent to it for the Mercy Funeral Home. The defunct Putt Putt, which is an eyesore in itself, and the split ice cream stand at 532 East Nine Mile are surrounded by asphalt and concrete parking lots and chain-link fencing. The Oak Street Health Strip Mall at 1142 through 1182 East Nine Mile, also 100% impervious surface. And then there is the Village Hall at 1012 East Nine Mile with its enormous asphalt parking lot that runs along Nine Mile bordered by a strip of scrub and weeds. At one point, it had some bushes that were never kept up, and I did complain to the city, and the result was they just chopped them down, left some stumps, and now they just sit there. I wonder if Hazel Park follows any recommendations or guidelines for impervious surface in its development? And does Hazel Park believe that aesthetics are unimportant in attracting new business? I have a friend who wanted to expand his existing business two years ago and considered Hazel Park for a hot minute, and then decided that his clientele would be put off by the low-rent look and reputation of it, and extended and expanded in Huntington Woods. There are multiple cannabis retailers in Hazel Park, and each one is attractive because aesthetics, aka curb appeal, matter. People and products are brands, but so too are cities. Hazel Park is a brand, and it's not a great one. I suspect there are people in this city who don't want to see it change and grow and improve, and one way to stop it from doing that is to decimate its tree canopy, cover its surfaces in concrete, and paint it all beige. In short, make it unattractive. There are a few businesses in Hazel Park that look great, among them Mabel Gray, Joe Barr, Ace Harbor, but I suspect those businesses look great because their owners recognize the importance of curb appeal, not because Hazel Park finds value in it and insists upon it. Hazel Park needs to change before it can grow, and the first thing it should do is become a Tree City USA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Any topic? Doesn't have to be trees, anything.
Good evening. Tanya Osby, 1636 East Otis Avenue. So, good evening, council. I'm coming up here today. I have a couple topics and a story to read from a resident that couldn't be here, but I'm going to tackle the shortest one first. I live right at the corner of Merrill and Otis. If anyone's driven past the corner, they'll notice that the house that used to be there for years and years now looks quite different. My fiance and I have invested a considerable amount of time on our property, as well as kind of doing our civic duty and looking at the park across the street, picking up garbage. If there is an incident that happens, we make sure we call the city or call the authorities as needed. One of the things I've spent the last three summers looking at is children playing in the park, right? That's what parks are meant for. That's why we design and have parks. And one of the current concerns that I've had over and over again is with the park being so close to Merrill that's become busier and busier over the years, people going from Nine Mile to Eight Mile. There seems to be a lack of proper signage to get people to slow down. Evidently, people are going to do what they do, but I felt as though the city hadn't put up enough signs to thwart said behavior. So I took it upon myself, spoke to Tom down at DPW, even spoke to Mr. Klobuchar himself, asking about signage, signage that would actually do something, either a digital signage that would tell people how fast they're speeding, or signage that was a little bit more visible and available for people to at least be made aware of. And after months and months of my requests going unheard, I called back, I followed up. Months and months later, I finally got a chance to speak to someone, and eventually a sign was placed so high and at such a distance from the park, you can't even tell it's there. So it makes me beg the question of child safety and concern for the city of Hazel Park and the council. When a resident that's concerned asks for proper signage that can thwart a child getting hit by a car, how important is it to the city? And what is it that we, as residents, can do to make sure our requests are heard? When I asked about either coming to city council or simply maybe doing a petition, I was told that it wasn't necessary, that it would be taken care of. And here I am today, because clearly it is necessary, and it was not taken care of. There is not proper signage, and as of recently, there was an accident of someone driving way too fast, coming across Merrill, down Otis, that ran into, nearly missed a tree into a sign, to a light post that's still kind of hanging over without any proper roping or taping off, because it's an issue. And I would just like to see that we care enough as a city about parks and children that play, especially having the preschool swing set as close to the curb as possible, about children's safety, and that we put the proper signage that could at least thwart that. And then tell the residents what we can do to help, because it's a give and a take, right? We're not just asking for things to be done. There's also an expectation that we, as civic people here within the community, are willing to do something, but ignoring it is not okay. So that's one. Secondly, I second everything that Meg and my other residents here have stated. I live right on the corner. I've noticed that it's louder, absolutely louder, in my full brick home that was built in the '70s with plaster walls. It's a noticeable change. You know, the city of Hazel Park gives out tickets for blight. Those stumps are blight. You go in the city of Detroit, and what do you see? A lack of trees, consistent blight. It appears as though, and I'm not saying this is the case, as though there was no consideration made for the city of Hazel Park and its residents and what trees represent. You can go to any number of communities, whether it's Ferndale, Huntington Woods, and so on and so forth, and see the nature of trees, right? What it represents to the community. And as Hazel Park grows over the time, which it has, this is not this small, tiny, little podunk town that people used to think of 30 and 40 years ago. We have homes that are being priced at $389. We're bringing in higher-type tax brackets, higher education, right? People who care and are considerate of the city and what they want here, right? And with that comes a more considerate and concerned effort of what you do, how you do it, how it looks matters quite greatly to us. So a greater sense of transparency. So to kind of wrap it all up, we care. We're here because we care. It shouldn't be a fight between us and city council. I think there's plenty of us that are willing to work with city council and figure out what is our part as citizens outside of just lamenting and expecting everybody to do something except for us. That's not the case. But I think communication, transparency, answering phone calls, answering emails, whether it's an automated email response, whether it's the person they call at the clerk's office that has some information, but it just seems as though people have a question mark over their heads, right? And then at the point in which it gets to the court board, it just seems like there's just a whole bunch of people screaming with their heads on fire. Most of us have done work behind the scenes, and then we've reached our breaking point, right? And last but not least, for resident Deborah Connor Perry and Doris A. Law that could not be here today, she wanted to state that she grew up in East Roberts, and her mother still lives there, who's now 96. They have such fond memories of the community, and given how long they've lived in Hazel Park, them seeing the trees, climbing the trees, the tree that I... It's Daisy's tree, the one that blooms in the courts in Hazel Park on Otis that's yellow and bright, and them having conversations and being upset and crying about the fact that perhaps one day that tree might leave. And while I can't read the whole thing, you know, to summarize it, what gets people to stay in communities and grow up in communities and bring their families in communities and invest in communities has a lot to do with the aesthetic, and that seems to be missed on the city's end. Whether it was on purpose, I don't think there was anything malicious to do with it, but it seems to be missed. And I think we are owed, at least as the residents of Hazel Park, for communication and consideration about how the city moves forward, and at least some input to a certain degree. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Charles Lassay, 335 East Hayes. I've been a resident since 2010. I'm here also because of the tree situation. I understand that it's known how many trees have been removed. Can anybody provide those details, that number?
No.
No? Do we know that it exists?
I can check with my DPW director to see if he has a number.
Okay. Do we know how many trees have been planted?
That I don't know either. How many trees have been planted since we started?
Planted 30 in the past few weeks.
September 25th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, today.
Today, we can probably get that information.
So I'm reminded, and I feel like this community is going through this change in international business, there's a known platitude that the domestic product will only be as good as domestic consumer demands. And with the changing demographic of Hazel Park, I also feel like what used to be acceptable, I feel like the tide is rising, and times are changing, and their accountability and transparency is something that the newer residents, the changing demographic of the city, are going to ask of the city. And if you want to retain that demographic, i.e. property taxes, the government also needs to change. And so with that, I would like to share with you a poem by Maya Angelou titled "When Great Trees Fall." When great trees fall, rocks on distant hills shudder, lions hunker down in tall grasses, and even elephants slumber after safety. When great trees fall in forests, small things recoil into silence, their senses eroded beyond fear. When great souls die, the air around us becomes light, rare, stale. We breathe briefly. Our eyes briefly see with a hurtful clarity. Our memory, suddenly sharpened, examines, gnaws on kind words unsaid, promised walks never taken. Great souls die, and our reality, bound to them, takes leave of us. Our souls, dependent upon their nurture, now shrink, wizened. Our minds, formed and informed by their radiance, fall away. We are not so much maddened as reduced to the unutterable ignorance of dark, cold caves. And when great souls die, after a period, peace blooms, slowly and always, irregularly. Spaces fill with a kind of soothing electric vibration. Our senses restored, never to be the same, whisper to us, they existed, they existed. We can be, be, and be better, for they existed. I would like to encourage the city council to listen to the community and understand the importance of accountability, transparency, doing your civic, doing your duty to your constituents, and, you know, advocating for trees and the environment and all the benefits that the trees provide. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Gavin Burns. I live at 1636 East Otis as well. I'm here to kind of echo the words that you've just heard. I'm not here to beat a dead horse, but, I mean, I think it should be pretty recognizable at this point that there's a lot of consideration that's been taken into how the community feels about these trees, how these issues have come about, and truthfully, we're really trying to voice ourselves. I've been a member of the community since 2012. I'm in my second home in Hazel Park. I decided to reinvest and move back into the community in 2020 from a home just a couple blocks south of where I live. From my driveway currently, I can look up Merrill, down Merrill to Pearl, and all the way down Otis, and it would be staggering for any of you to stand there and look around and just turn and see how many trees have been cut. I promise you, you'd see at least 20 from my driveway. It's a lot. And it's hard to look at, and it's painful to know that I've invested so much time, so much money, so much effort into a home that I'm very proud of, and the two beautiful trees right on the side of my house, right next to my new fence, got lopped down. So now I've got these two terribly ugly stumps right there. It sucks. It's really a bummer. I see a lot of opportunity in this city. I'm on the beautification committee because I think that there is an opportunity for this community to grow, to look better, to improve for the people that live here. I just, I wanted to echo the words of everybody behind me and just say that, you know, this has been, it's been hard to watch, and it's been painful for me particularly, spending so much time trying to help this community grow, help this community improve, only to watch all these things get decimated. So, you know, I walk down my street just like anybody else, and it's hard not to notice all of these stumps everywhere. It's painful. So I just wanted to echo those words. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, that's not just. Good evening, council. So addressing the council this evening, I've noticed stark.
Mike, state your name and address.
I'm sorry, Mike. I usually have it all written out. Mike on Manatee Street.
Flores, for the record.
Yeah, Flores, F-L-O-R-E-S.
Thank you.
I've been here a few times.
We know.
Again, I've noticed that there's a stark contrast walking from Ferndale to Hazel Park. Watching the tree canopy vanish within just a few blocks, regrettably, on my own street of Manatee, lacks a single tree on it, underscoring the urgent need for an increased tree canopy in our community. Trees are not merely ornamental, they are essential contributors to our well-being and the environment. They provide shade, improve air quality, observe carbon dioxide, enhance the overall aesthetics of our neighborhoods. The absence of tree diminishes the charm and health of our community. I urge, like the rest of the community members here, to take action together. Let's explore opportunities to join in planting initiatives, advocate for tree-friendly policies, and participate in events that enhance the canopy of our community. Collaborate with our neighbors to propose planting projects during city planning sessions, or engage and engage with local environmental organizations to make our streets greener. Example, the first speaker. Speaking to council this evening is a powerful way to amplify our collective voice for a greener, healthier community. Together, let's transform our streets into vibrant spaces that benefits us all for the generations to come. And I think what was very powerful was one of the speakers spoke about, what do you need from us? And I encourage council to let us know, what do you need from us? How can we help you? Help Hazel Park become a greener city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? So you know, a closed public discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe in the interim, while the speakers were asking questions, Amanda Mason has done some research and has some information.
So just to address a few of the issues and the neighbors, the residents' concerns, and this has been ongoing information that we've been dealing with for quite some time, several months, certainly before Megan or various other individuals have asked questions, to be candid, because these have been issues that have been brought to myself, again, as code enforcement supervisor and as city attorney who does special projects, by Alyssa, by Luke, by the mayor, by Andy, by frankly, proactively before all these questions. And so we do appreciate the ongoing community support, but these are all things we've been looking at for some time. I think there may be a misconception that the Department of Public Works and various agencies are not tracking and keeping, keeping logs and records of all of this, and that is 100% inaccurate. First, to be very clear, the tree company that goes through and looks at these things certainly does make a report. I don't know what information was provided to whoever regarding the fact that we simply follow orders. We do not. That report, which is in paper form, is given to the Department of Public Works, and someone, the superintendent specifically, with whoever he tasks to assist him, looks at the trees individually, looks at those, looks at the numbers. And by way of last year, for example, and this is again sort of section by section, so the numbers may be a little different depending on whether or not one section went to a different year, but for example, last year, there were 95 removals that happened in the last section, there were 70 trims. To be very clear, that means that 70 reversals happened of a tree being removed. So this, this rubber stamping conception that, or misconception that's happening is simply inaccurate. There are plenty of things where there is a sign-off on that, there are plenty of things where the tree is kept. To be very clear also, and I have copies of the information that is provided, whenever section is up, there is a letter that is sent to every single house in that neighborhood. So that letter is sent to the house indicating that the program is going to be starting, what's going to be happening, and that more information will be forthcoming. Phone numbers are on there, DPW's phone number is on there, there is that. Then there is also, if your tree is slated for a trim or removal, a letter that goes to the homeowner, as well as a door knocker that goes to the physical home. That addresses multiple concerns. One, sometimes you have renters, and so you have someone that has an interest in the tree, the homeowner, and you also potentially have a renter. But you have that point of contact in real lifetime, which is the door knocker, which also indicates a phone number you can call for complaints, concerns, questions to be a part of the process, as well as also the letter. So we're asking for that resident feedback. In 100% of the cases, if that comes in, and a resident has concerns about a tree being slated for removal, the independent evaluation is done by the Department of Public Works, and then that determination is made. Again, we had, you know, roughly 70 reversals of that to a trim from, and to be clear, also just looking at those numbers, our grant that we got can replace more of the trees than we took down. So just to be clear with that information as well, you know, I mean, we're going out and doing all kinds of things, and we will seek additional grants certainly from the department, but, you know, our grant that we receive from SUTAR is on the top end of what they receive there as well. So I just, there is this information, there are legal reasons, obviously, why some of that can't be provided ahead of time, those are public nuisances perhaps, if there's sidewalk issues, there's certain safety issues. But all of that information is going out, and I do have that. If anybody has any questions, I have a ton of that information, we can compile that section by section. Last year's section was a very large section, so I imagine those numbers are a little bit higher, to be clear. You guys have the map there, it's eight or nine, I don't recall, but it's a larger section, certainly. So.
I think that it would be very helpful, and I agree with the residents asking for more transparency, and part of the reason that we don't have the information personally is because this is not something that we are directly involved with one-on-one. The city council is here to oversee the projects, approve the projects, and then make sure that they're properly maintained and that they are properly, that they are properly taken care of. I have been very active in creating the Environmental Sustainability Commission, with the goal of that being, you can roll your eyes if you'd like, but it is an important, it is an important, it is an important thing that we have in our city, and I wish that more residents were involved in it, because I purposely created that commission because I want there to be independent verification and independent action on more green initiatives in our community, because we can't do all of it ourselves. The city administration cannot do it all themselves, but regardless of that, I do think that it is important for us to have more of these numbers forward-facing. I think that it is important for us to communicate more of these numbers outwardly. I think that being more proactive about the information that we're putting out about the replanting progress and the replanting program and how it takes place, I think is super important as well.
With respect to that also, just so it's clear, 100%, if a resident, 100% statistics, if a resident has requested a tree replacement, that has happened. My understanding is it's been an incredibly low request from residents who have had trees removed, but 100% of the replacements that have been requested will be granted.
Yeah.
That's a great statistic.
It is.
But we can.
Can we have a little respect out there in the audience, please, and be quiet?
Thank you.
The other thing would be, a couple of things were raised. You got this part of the order, 1220.015, it was raised about a board?
I can address that also.
Yes.
So Mr. Klobuchar did ask me about that, gosh, before the holiday perhaps? We did look into it, it is, it appears that it was a board that was created at some point that, it's written a little interestingly, but it was in order, the purpose of it was to declare the types and species of trees on private property that would happen, and if you had an objection to being able to, wanting to plant a different type of tree, that that would be what would occur. We've already selected the trees.
The trees have been selected, and one of the speakers brought that to Tom and I's attention, the existence of this board yesterday, and we looked it up, and what appears is their role is to suggest species of trees that are to be approved, that can be planted. So we already have a list. There is something about a tree report, but that tree report is vague, ambiguous, and nonspecific, we found. So again, I think what we're trying to do today, and we've got some data, and we can try and share more of that data, so folks can see that this isn't just the forester going in and cutting down these trees, or it's not just Tom going in and saying, cut that one, cut that one, cut that one. Trust me, we don't want to cut any more trees than we have to. Okay, please, please, this is my time now to speak, okay? We don't want to cut additional trees. We don't want to cut any tree we don't have to cut. But as I explained, we have, I'm sorry, Megan, this is my time now, I'm not addressing you, I'm just saying the audience. We have to make sure that we do protect the city's safety and liability. Case law has changed, and the city of Hazel Park, once we recognize that there's a problem or an issue with a tree, our liability for that tree and its continued safety increases significantly. So we are all about saving as many trees as possible, but we are also all about making sure that we are as safe as possible, and we minimize our liability from these trees, from the sidewalk, from limbs falling, from trees falling. Speaker did indicate that we had a conversation, and the number, 15 trees was quoted for property damage, not 15 trees for property damage, but 15 trees that had hit homes. So there are also other property damage claims that we get on a regular basis, and the first thing that our insurance carrier asks us, and we are to a degree self-insured, is, were you aware of any previous problems with the tree? So we are certainly interested in meeting with Lawrence Sabson, and we want to find out if he has and is aware of any strategies to evaluate trees more carefully, or some form of criteria that we could utilize to minimize our liability, but we also have to make sure that we protect the security of the residents and the safety of the residents, and we don't increase our liability. So, and I'm sure you guys want us to do that, okay? And again, we gave you a lot of time yesterday, and we're going to give you some more time, and we're going to meet with this guy, I'm committed to doing it, I'm committed to listening to him, okay? We're all committed, but we also, you have to understand that we have an obligation as. we have an obligation as well. And the case law on this has changed. It has shifted liability more to cities. If there is even anything that we are aware of that could be a potential hazard, and we fail to address that, that increases our liability. And I'm sure Amanda Mason or Melissa Schwartz can speak on that with a little bit more detail.
It's very, very true.
It, it's true. I mean, different, there's different case law and things like that. So again, we're open to dialogue. No one here wants to cut trees. When I drive down through the courts, it is, it really is, it is stark, the number of trees that have been removed. I understand the frustration. We hope that you also understand that this isn't something we want to do. We would rather spend that money and those resources on something else. We have to make sure we have safe sidewalks. We have to make sure trees are not presenting a hazard. That is an objective fact, that nothing you say will alter that important obligation and duty that we have, that fiduciary duty that we have to every resident in this community. So we're about dialogue. We may not make you totally happy. We may make you more happy. We'll try, but the most important thing we have to do is make sure that those trees are safe. So like I said, I talked to you, I'm sure I'll be talking to you some more. I'm sure I'll be talking to all of you some more. Another speaker mentioned signs, since apparently I ended up my name in the cork board. I'll address that one too. All I can say about that one is, as soon as I hung up, I ordered those signs placed. Okay? Now, my DPW director reports to me yesterday that the one sign was maybe a little high and should be repositioned. So we'll reposition that. But I want you to know, okay, I never ignored you. I ordered it immediately after you called me, and I was informed it was installed, and it was installed. And I guess it was installed in a way that was not as, you know, as visible as it could have been. Yes.
Yes, maybe a suggestion that we're going to have to bring up during our work study in February about some of those parks. And that was a good suggestion by the one gentleman. I'd like to, lady, about the zones around the parks. Maybe we should maybe look at 15-mile-hour zones around the parks themselves.
There's a, there's a standard. We've got it. You've got it. Like, like I said, there's, and that's like the, the speed bumps. Right, no, I'm not pleased, just again, we can look at that, and that's something that we can do.
That's why I wanted to bring it up with the work study.
But it's not, it's not usually, there's a standard speed limit. Okay? You can maybe reduce it to 20, but there are things that you have to look at before we say, "Yeah, let's put up speed bumps."
That's why I was asking for a discussion on it, at a study session, that we can discuss this openly, again, in camera, I don't care, to get to the point where we have a lot of small parks and top parks within our communities. And it would probably be advantageous on our part to make zones marked clearly. If there's 25 or 20 or 15 or whatever.
There's things that it's.
So that people can see that there's a park there.
It's a strategy called traffic calming. And what you do is, and lower speed limits could be, you don't go down to 15 a residential, which you could maybe go down to 20.
Again.
Okay? But you also, you need, it involves painting, it involves signage, we're going to, traffic studies, and this is.
That's why I wanted to bring up the work study, and we talked about this.
Right. You, you have to look at things.
And we put that up for the work study.
We can talk about that, but that is going to be a work study on its own.
Yes. That's a long discussion.
That is a, that is a long discussion. One thing that, you know, we, we don't want to do is to, speed bumps are not really an option. No city in Michigan deploys and utilizes speed bumps on residential roads. Some of these.
Stop, wait, let me finish.
Speed humps is.
They are speed humps, not speed bumps. So there is, they're not, though they are, look it up, they're very clearly not the same thing. Okay? So again, speed humps are something that are utilized, but what, and, but like I said, and we're, we're, those have to be engineered, again, as Alyssa Sullivan indicated, as part of a comprehensive traffic calming plan.
Which we need to do anyway, because we add major adjustments to the major mile roads surrounding our entire city, including the freeway. So this is something that we have discussed before, and I definitely want us to touch back on this in that study session.
Freeway has changed a lot of our demographics and how things are routed through the city.
Hugely.
And people, our traffic flows are changing within our communities. And there's other things about maybe having parking on one side of some of these other thoroughways where there's no parking allowed at all. That would also help slow some traffic down as well. And we've already started talking about this before this meeting. Alyssa Sullivan and I have talked about this in, in great detail at different times. And we've been scheduling this back in November. We started scheduling this work study in February because we'd had the holidays interrupt our schedules like everybody else. We had to make time for our family obligations as well. But, and in trying to make time, it's hard to get us all together sometimes in certain meetings for a certain length of time, or work studies rather than a council meeting. But if we have to do a council meeting to do it, we can do it that way too.
But also to give our department heads the time to bring the information that we're requesting from them.
And we've asked them to start preparing, yes.
We want to make sure that we have the information so that we can then, the public can also see that information. I, I actually, I grew up in Berkeley, so I refer to Berkeley a lot. Berkeley has a tree board, and they're a Tree City USA, and that is part of some conversations that have been being had behind the scenes, previous to the, previous to Section 8. I'm in Section 5. My trees were all cut down on my street three, four years ago. I, I find it somewhat comical, but also a bit frustrating that people didn't care when it was their neighborhood to the extent that they care because it's the courts. I am a dog walker. I walk in, I walk in all seasons. I definitely avoid trees, or I avoid streets that don't have a lot of trees when I walk, if possible, because it can be very hot for the dogs that I'm walking. It can be unsafe for the dogs that I'm walking. So I, I don't think that the communication is coming across appropriately with the efforts that are being made, and also the, the extra plans that are being made behind the scenes here, and also like just the conversations and the ideas that are coming forward. These are, I've had a conversation with our DPW. I've had a conversation with the mayor. I've had a conversation with everybody up here on council with our Environmental Sustainability Commission. And I think that there are some great opportunities coming up, and I'm really looking forward to seeing some of these ideas get more vetted out and more, and, and more developed and actually get put into place. So.
Yeah. And like I said, I just wanted to explain the difference between bumps and humps. And it's.
Up on that.
It's, it's, I am, because there, speed bumps are a huge liability, and I'll read you what Michigan Traffic Improvement Association says about speed bumps in Michigan. And there goes my glasses. Because speed bumps have considerable potential for liability suits, Michigan has officially rejected them as a standard traffic control device on public streets. So bus, fire truck, moving van, semi-truck, et cetera must virtually stop before going over a speed bump. So that is from the Traffic Improvement Association in Michigan. So lots of things we can look at there, and lots of things that need to be.
Well, I think the other issue, I just got back to the tree thing here. Let's get back to this issue. I think that maybe some commu, better communication through our DPW director, and some emails that he can respond to, and then relay those to the city council a little more up to date, may help us better see a little more what's happening. If he could do that, I would appreciate that. And can we have a, you want Tom Jones to come up and speak on this, or Mr. Jones? Wait a minute.
He's here.
I just want to ask if he had any comments since he's here.
Mayor and Council, Tom Jones, DPW Superintendent. The tree programs, it is a big topic.
It's been a big topic for years, yes.
We are currently in Section 9. We've gone through, when we go through, we're trying to make things as safe as possible. I look at many things, and ideally, I want to trim a tree down. Or trim a tree, I'm sorry, not take a tree down. Trim a tree, make it safe. When the tree company that we have hired goes in, they go up in the tree and look at things. They look at things that we do not see from the ground. Okay? There can be rot from, from the top into the trunk. Many times, there's trees I'll drive by and like, "Oh, that tree looks great." And you go around on the sidewalk side, and there's a, a hole in the tree the size you could, you could put your head in. I, I've seen this over and over again. I've also seen all the storms that come through. We've had some wicked storms that have come through in the last decade. And I know we hear a lot of the old growth trees. When an old growth tree gets uprooted, it does major damage. And I have pictures upon pictures of the damage that happens. I do not want to ever see anybody get hurt. Okay? I take my job very seriously. When we go through with this tree program, we followed up with our sidewalk program. Sidewalks, go down some of our streets, go down some of your streets with a wheelchair. My father was in a wheelchair the last eight years of his life. Many of these sidewalks in the past, he wouldn't be able to get down. Okay? So the trees, the sidewalks, all these things go hand in hand. Okay? And it has to make sense. And yes, I do not enjoy taking a tree down that no one loves. But sometimes this has to happen. And I think we have great opportunities, especially the, the courts have been brought up. We have courtyards, or we have a great opportunity to, to replant in these areas. And the trees we plant so far are eight to 10 foot tall. Okay? If you go to Scout Park, Scout Park was one of our plantings, hmm, maybe four years ago, we planted over 16 trees in that park, and they're coming in very nicely. The trees, some of the tree selections that were planted in our right-of-ways between the sidewalk and the road, our right-of-ways are very small, are very sporadic throughout the city. Some are wider, some are smaller. The tree selection that was planted 60 years ago doesn't make sense sometimes. Okay? I've had to take trees down that were 75 foot tall that had no more than a two, two and a half foot ramp next to the tree, where we have to bring in a crane truck to take these down. And I think as a, a child, I would have loved it because it's a ramp. Okay? But these trees, it, it's not really fair to some of the trees that were selected to be planted there. You, you wouldn't put some of these trees in these areas. You just wouldn't. Going forward, when we replant, we want to put in trees that make sense. Trees that are not going to become 70 foot tall and buckle the street. No one's talked about the street yet, but your streets get buckled. You're, I get complaints of, "My street floods." And I look at it. This tree has a root system larger than the house they live in, and the, the street is buckling. These are all things that go in conjunction. These trees were planted, like I say, 60 years ago, 50 years ago. We, we have a lot of maple in this town. At 70, yes, we do. We have over 4,000 city trees. I, I have all the numbers. I do.
We can let him finish talking, please.
It is respectful to interrupt him.
Let him finish.
We, we do keep track of the numbers. And also, I'd like to add, we've, we talked about replanting. Yes, we just replanted. We finished Section 6. Okay? Section 7, we started, and we're putting out letters. Currently, we're compiling to finish Section 7 this year. Now, Section 9 is, is where the courts are, where they're talking about. That's where the tree trimming and removing is happening currently. Section 8, we just completed the sidewalks, and that's with all new ADA corners. And we also did some roadwork while we were in that section. And then Section 7 is our replant. There is a lag between cutting a tree down, stumping the tree, letting the tree actually degrade a little bit so we can have an opportunity to replant. We can't always replant exactly in the same spot where a tree has removed. But these are things that are, that are in action. Unfortunately, we, we do put letters out asking residents if they would like a new tree going forward. And it's a small percentage of, of people that actually say, "Yes, I want a tree." In fact, I, I went with the, the tree company when they were planting recently, and a guy come running out. He goes, "You're not going to plant a tree here, are you?" And I'm like, "No, sir, we're planting it here." And he's like, "Good, because I'll, I'll rip it out if you put one in front of my house." So I get a mixed signal also, and I, I get people begging for.
For trees.
From, for work to be done and things. We, we have a program. When we started our sidewalk program, we, we ran into trouble right away with the trees that have overgrown their small space that they had. And that's when we did put into effect a tree program. We, we want to be proactive. We, we've been reactive for many years. And like I say, I, I talked about some of the storms that come through. You know, maybe the number is a small amount, but I don't think any one of us want a tree on top of our house in the middle of the night in a storm. We don't want this to happen. You know? But like I say, I, I do care. I've been here at DPW for 27 years, lifelong resident, still live in the city, love this city, and I do my best to take care of this city. So yes, we are open to changes, changes things. I, I look at in the past decade, our, our council has changed, our city has changed. And I think for the good. Okay? But there's always room for improvement. But I've been here since I was born, and I, I've seen, I've seen the changes. I've seen where it was all homeownership, and then I've seen where it turned to 50% rental. Rental's fine, but that's a turnover in, in people and residents. And then now I'm seeing where people want to come back and live here. And I love it. Okay? I like, I've defended this town for many years, and I, I don't have to so much. And I know that we still have a long way to go. We've talked about, you know, maybe some of our businesses and some of our things. And we would love everything to be, be Disney World here. It's, it's not there, and it's going to take time. And COVID did not help any of us. I know it's, you know, it's, it did some of the growth of some of our, our businesses in this town, but we'll get there. But all in all, like I say, I do have numbers. And also, I wanted to add on, through MDOT, drive up and down the service drive, over 100 trees were planted up and down the service drive this past year. We did 20 in our parks. We did in Merrill Park this year and Felker. And then we just did the 31 at the end of the year. Like I say, finish in Section 6 and start in Section 7. We are doing these things. And like I say, I think we got some great opportunities in the courts. I think there's a lot of room for, for trees. And I think if, in a not-so-distant future, you will see that, just like at Scout Park.
Sometimes we got to take the go with the bad. And that's the way it is sometimes. And I don't always agree with how things are proceeding, but sometimes we have to take what we can and make a better society with what we have. If that means taking some of the trees out now and putting more trees in, and if down the road, if some people don't want the trees, we may have to mandate that we plant a few more in order to make our streetscapes look more appropriate. And I think that's something we have to look down the road at. And be patient with how we dig up the trees. It takes three years. We took mine out across the street. The lady didn't, I didn't have none in front of my house. One of my neighbors had one across the street. She didn't want to have it. She's got two letters. She said, "Mike, I don't want it to have it taken down." So I said, "It's up to you. Just let Tom know it, DPW." And it kind of had a little lean to it. Had a windstorm, a small one, not a big one. I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, let the dog out. I get up at four o'clock in the morning, let the dog out. Next thing you know, I'm looking out the picture window at a big green canopy in front of my window. The tree fell right over. So there is some resolutions to certain situations where you did ask her that this tree was not 100% good. You said to that tour and it, it could be left, but there's a possibility. And is Tom always right? No. Is our arborist, whoever we use to look at some of the trees? No, they're not always right. But is there a possibility that we need to take a look at some of our other trees? Yes. But there's, for the most part, we have to look at the benefit of the safety of our community, walkability, and the tree scape itself will come as it goes. This tree scape wasn't built in a five-year period. The tree scape came back 50, 60 years ago when the city was developed back in 1940s. And then they did it, and I planted more trees later on. They planted trees in front of my first house on Goulson in the eighties. They had to take that tree down just recently. Okay? So there's different things that happened, but that tree erupted the whole sidewalk. Again, they planted the trees wrong. There wasn't enough room there. And that, we're looking at the safety factor and I think that's the biggest point we got to look at here. Walkability for people can go down the street, children can play, wheelchairs can go down them and not trip and fall and hurt themselves. And we also have to look at the street and maintenance value as well. Like you said, the streets are a big part of it as well. And I, we had to spit this conversation with Tom a few years ago about the same tree problems that we had, because we had a lot of other people concerned about how many trees we're taking down. I wasn't completely happy about it, was I, Mr. Klobuchar?
No.
I argued with you a few times.
No one, no one.
We all were, we all have our.
Removed.
We all argued with them. We weren't 100% for it. But on the other hand, we seen the, the numbers and the outcome of how it would benefit us in the long run.
It's about, like I said, protecting the safety of the community. And just your story with the neighbor illustrates it perfectly. Okay? It was supposed to come down. It didn't come down. It fell. And that's the nightmare that he has to deal with every day if he says trim one and then it falls. So understand that it's, it's not an exact science. We hear what you're saying. We're not, we're, we're not opposed to what you're saying. We just have objectives that we have to meet in terms of safety and life.
The only thing I would like to have is a little better communication between Tom and maybe the residents have a separate email address just for the tree conversations. And that you can forward any of those comments to us, the city council, so we have a better idea what's going on. And that would be, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
We do like.
I know you have a ton to do on every day, Tom, but I think that going forward, I think this has been a bigger issue than we all anticipated.
And Tom, I want to thank you for what I think was an excellent, comprehensive explanation of this program. I know you had something else to do tonight and I texted you and said, you need to come on up here at the last minute. And you did that and I appreciate that. And I hope that that explanation that you've given satisfies some people at home or in the audience that we're doing this for the right reasons. If there's another way to assess the trees or something like that, we're open to, we're always open to listening.
I appreciate everybody coming out and voicing their concerns. It doesn't go on death ears. We have had these concerns before and warn, and again, you brought it up again, and we're trying to make it better as best we can.
And when you're talking about the tree canopy, not to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor, but Alyssa Sullivan and Andy Lucero and I, I think we've been to every tree planting that we've had. Uh, we just planted trees, uh, at Felker earlier this year. And I know, I think all the council people have been at some of those tree.
Carum Park as well.
So, uh, at Carum Park as well. And we're going to continue. We invite all of you guys to come and plant trees with us. We're in partnership with Relief Michigan. We're going to continue to plant trees. Okay? And we're going to continue to try and make sure that we have an outstanding tree canopy. And we do replace trees for everybody that wants one.
I do want to thank everybody for coming out. I appreciate it, Tom.
I, I think that this is really a great opportunity for us to kind of reassess the work that we have done and then also take steps forward to continue, to continue to enhance the work that we're doing. Um, and I think that, um, better communication is always something that we should strive for. Um, so I'm really looking forward to being able to get some more transparency and some more forward-facing, public-facing information, um, accessible to people and presented to people. Because I think that we should gloat on occasion about our successes. And I know the hard work that Tom has put into this program and that, um, our environmental sust, environmental sustainability is working on. But I think that there are some great opportunities here, uh, as well. And I look forward to us being able to, um, you know, navigate through this and really embrace some, some more change and, um, get more trees planted.
Like we said, Amanda Neves wrote a grant, Sutar Foundation, $40,000. So we're going to make sure that replacement tree funding is in place for a good period of time.
And that is independent of the money that we've already put aside.
Of the money.
So that is just enhancement.
To, correct.
But also just so everyone is aware, $40,000 that purchases you approximately 111 trees, best case scenario. So, you know, that's what $40,000 purchases you. So I can't, you know, we will look into partnering with the DNR, et cetera. And as he indicated, there's between $10,000 and $50,000 that was provided last year. Again, currently the numbers with inflation, the way that they sit, what it takes to put those in, $40,000 equals anywhere from 100 to 111 trees. So that everyone's expectations are where they should be with that. I think that's a great number. It exceeds what was removed last year.
Absolutely.
And Sutar indicated that it would be an annual grant if the funds are there. So I think that's great. But $40,000 doesn't buy you, you know, a thousand trees. It's not like going to Home Depot, purchasing a tree for $70 on Mother's Day and putting it in the ground yourself.
Well, one thing we may want to do to explore with the DNR, if they're amenable to that, is remember, we're home to Axolterra. And Axolterra has the NEPS program. And I don't know if anybody knows what the NEPS program is, but what that is, is a, they put in a, uh, plastic cylinder near the tree and that tree helps the, uh, that cylinder helps the tree absorb nutrients. And we used those, uh, NEPS program when we planted trees in Scout Park a few years ago. And we had 100% survival rate with the trees. So they're Hazel Park Company, so they give us a good deal, but we do have to cover costs and things like that. So we might be able to utilize that. And during some of our plantings, if we've got additional money, or maybe the DNR will partner with us to utilize them, because it's very good for tree health. It's amazing. Uh, amazing stuff they're doing over there. So.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda, 1 through 14.
Your Honor, I move approval of the consent agenda, items 1 through 14.
Support. Any discussion on 1 through 14?
Yes, for the record, item 14, uh, is approved, pending approval of the Hazel Park Library Board and, uh, approval of the city attorneys in Espinal.
Okay. Let that clarification be noted. Any other discussion on 1 through 14?
Uh, we have the, we have the Hazel Park librarian here. She'd like to come up and make any. No? Okay. Maybe Barbara will.
Good evening, everyone.
Barb Winters.
Barbara Winter to 3051 Towers.
Here.
Been a resident since 2003 and also a library board member. And I am very thankful for, oh, and the planning commission. Um, I am very thankful for the, that your, the city is entertaining to collaborate with the library. We're a small but mighty library and we're doing so much. And one of the latest projects, uh, that we started looking into, it was a partnership with the DIA. Uh, it's called Partners in Public Art, also PIPA, P-I-P-A or PIPA. I don't know how to say it. Um, and unfortunately, the DIA lady who works with us, um, is sick, so she was not able to be there, but they were instrumental in helping us. Um, just for your vision or clarification, we are looking at the wall, the final, nothing is final yet, right? After the, you know, city manager, um, city council and the library board, uh, is going to approve everything, um, nothing will be final, but we are looking at the diagonal, um, nine mile engineering facing wall. Uh, and just for your information, um, if you go, if you Google, uh, PIPA at DIA, uh, they started the program in 2018. Of course, COVID put a stop at it, but, uh, Lake Orion has a fantastic mural. Rochester and Claussen are, as of now, three communities in Oakland County. They have a few communities in Macomb and Wayne as well. So thank you very much.
Barbara, can I ask a question? Do we know who the artists are that are doing?
No. So, um, I didn't want to mention it until the memorandum of understanding is final, but we will be, one of the, the program by DIA is, um, public art in community, so we need a community involvement. So there will be once everything, the lawyer formalities are done and, but necessary, there will be a survey to public and it, this is a DIA requirement, but we love it as well. Uh, it will be a short survey, uh, input, uh, and then the artists will be selected. We're, we already indicated to, uh, DIA people, we believe it should be Oakland County artists. We will try to find, find one close to home, but because, you know, our tax money, our pay for DIA mileage, we would love to, you know, to utilize local artists. Nothing is set in stone yet until everything is finished. Also, there are some issues that, you know, you, you envision something and then you become expert. I heard the city manager, he's an expert on bumps, right? Or planting trees. Yes, thank you very much. Um, the surface of the library is not smooth. It's like a, you know, unfortunately, we don't have enough money to replace it. We would love to, but we will be looking for more, um, spray artists. That is easier to do it, but those are all logistics and hopefully we're going to, and we have plenty of to choose from. I didn't know any mural authors. Now I, I have like 20 names I can, uh, say to you. So, yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Barbara, for all your hard work on this. This has been your baby and now it looks like this is going to go. So congratulations.
So, uh, anyone here from Detroit Pharmacy LLC? RBS affiliate LLC? Rashimi's Party Store, Shop Detroit? They all have their business licenses. Welcome again and renewed. And any more discussion, dissection on the consent agenda at all? Nothing? Okay. Motion passes. Administration reports item one, ordinance to amend Title V Business License and Regulations for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval on second reading.
Your Honor, I move approval for the amendments to the business licensing ordinance, chapter 5 dash O3.
Support. Any discussion? extension? Passes. Was this a new business? New business, Alyssa Sullivan? Business you wanted to talk about, uh, maybe having us, uh, work study in February?
Yes, the, uh, I would like to, um, seek a date in February. Uh, we had spoken about this before, the first of the year, about, um, we had previous, in previous years, we had had a, um, like a study session, a work session where the department heads came in, kind of gave us a, a bit of an overview of what they had accomplished in past years, what they sought to accomplish in the upcoming year. And, um, just a way for us to kind of get on track and really, um, and really kind of, uh, put some dots on, on places on the map of where we're headed.
Mr. Mayor, we're already planning that and we'll get with you all to make sure we can find a date that works for all of you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I appreciate that very much.
Any other new business from council?
It will be open to the public also, just so everybody knows, so you can attend.
Any new business that council would like to bring up? Anything else? Okay, we'll go from new business to communications from this department heads. Any department heads want any more communications? Uh, we have our water superintendent, Tim.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, just a reminder about the weather that's up and coming. We are going to be dropping in the next two weeks below the 20s. So as I've mentioned before at previous meetings and the information on there is how to protect your house from having your pipes freeze or, uh, having your, uh, your spigots on the outside of the house crack or break open. Everything's on, online. Uh, anybody has any questions on, on that? Give us a call. We'll, we'll walk through it with you, just to make sure that you don't run into any problems. And that's it.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. Any other department heads?
Chief Brian Buchholz.
I know it's been a long meeting, but I'll be quick. Uh, today's National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And thank you. So I'm appreciative of my own officers as well as all around the country. And so I'm thankful for that. Um, just wanted to share a little story of something that happened today. Um, there is a group that's a criminal organization that's working all across the country and they made their way to Michigan recently. And their information's always shared with all of our partners in the area. And one of our officers located a vehicle this morning. Didn't have the same plate on it, but he recognizes it as a vehicle in this BOL put out. So he followed the vehicle, thought it matched up, turned his lights on, tried to stop it. It took off. Uh, we terminated our pursuit once it got in Detroit, just for risk and that kind of thing. Uh, but because of our officer getting that plate, he was able to give that to our partners that were investigating these people. And they were arrested at the airport later on. Cause there's, they know of our license plate readers and what goes on. So they're constantly changing plates and that kind of thing. But, uh, because of his efforts, they were able to match this plate up, go through OnStar, located them and they're arrested. So just really appreciative and proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Seeing no one, moves on to the city attorneys. Who would speak?
Amanda go first tonight.
Amanda?
Nothing to say other than thank you, chief, for all that you do. I do really appreciate you. I don't underst, I don't think everyone knows how above and beyond you go. Um, I've personally experienced having chief personally go out and investigate pretty low-level things just to have it happen, something that I've reported to him. And I don't think you have a lot of chiefs of police that actually go out and do basic level patrol work like he does with a smile on his face and getting it done. So thank you to all of the police officers that we have, but thank you to you, chief.
Thank you. Also.
Just want to wish everyone a good and Happy New Year. Thank you.
You. That takes us to our city manager.
It wouldn't be a council meeting if I didn't say it. Michigan's system, municipal finance remains fundamentally broken. Uh, I can't break that streak. So we are hopeful that the legislature will return to session at some point on the House side. And, uh, there'll be some movement with respect to reform of the tax situation with headley propay interaction. So, uh, there's been some talk about that. I don't know if it will get done this session though, given the political climate, but the league is, uh, is hopeful. So, uh, and again, I just want to say, we, we do try up here. And you may not always agree with everything that we do, but we do try really hard to serve all the residents and to make good decisions and to balance all those competing interests. So I'm easy to find. I will call you back. I will try to help you immediately. Sometimes things don't turn out perfectly, but it's not that we don't care and it's not that we're not paying attention. So call me anytime and you know, I will talk to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, sir. And I would take it to, uh, our newest council member, Andrea Washington.
Hi, um, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight. Um, I have been attending city council meetings for a really long time. Well, since, I'll say 2020 and, um, since they were on Zoom. And this is the most people I've seen at a council meeting as a community. So it's not that we do not care. We truly do care for this community and we do want to hear from you. Um, and I really appreciate everyone that does reach out to me if, um, I'm still learning here as city council. Um, but I also have a big trust in our, um, department heads and I know that everyone wants to make the best decision for the city. Um, I also wanted to talk about, um, since we are on the, we were talking about trees earlier, um, the rain smart rebates through the Water Resources Commissioner of Oakland County. Um, please look into that if you want to put a tree in your own yard. Um, you are able to get a rebate up to $200, I believe. Um, you can also get rebates on planting a rain garden and also getting a rain barrel. You can also get rebates on planting a rain garden and also getting a rain barrel. So these are ways to stay sustainable. And thank you again. Have a great day.
Thank you. Council Malondo.
I'd like to echo council member Washington's comments. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. To the people that approached us respectfully, spoke within your allotted time limit, thank you for your time. To the people that spoke well beyond their time, made comments repeatedly throughout the meeting, were extraordinarily interruptive, this is not a baseball game. And I know that this is your first time here, but I ask in the future that you practice a little bit more decorum and give a little bit more respect to the people up here. Respect is given, and I just really want to make sure that, I love working with people that approach us honestly with issues that want to be collaborative, but for people that come up and act the way that some people came up here today, I have zero, zero interest. So please, if you want to create a better city and create a better environment for our residents, please act appropriately. Thank you.
Council Malondo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody, in the words of a former city council person, thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process. He'll remain nameless, but he knows who he is. This is, goes through each neighborhood, section nine. So we've been hearing about this. Each time we go through and do the sidewalks, we do the trees. The guy responsible, the head guy, Tom, lives in the city, as he stated. So we, we all care about this. This is not something we like to waste money or anything like that. So the wet, bad weather's coming. Watch, make sure you get your sidewalks cleared for everybody. There's, we have a lot of people walking around, obviously, and enjoying the neighborhood. And I just want to thank this great amount of people that came out, and I'm glad Barbara Winter is doing her thing with the Detroit Institute of Art. It's cool to bring that here. Thank you. And in closing, if you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you.
May I approach Jim Sullivan?
Um, I want to echo everybody else's comments about appreciating people, the general public reaching out, the discussions, the emails, the phone calls. I definitely appreciate people coming to city council meetings. I do want to say also that I look forward to us having more opportunities to do more in our community with tree planting. The partnership with Relief Michigan is because I kind of pushed the hand of the city to do it, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done so far with our partnership with them, and we can only go up from here. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing more planting. I'm looking forward to potentially establishing a new tree board going forward so that we can be better stewards of the trees that we have planted and that we will plant in the next few years. And I really am grateful for the work that our Environmental Sustainability Commission has done so far, and I look forward to seeing more initiatives put forward by them. We are always seeking people to join those boards and commissions. That's one of the most important ways that you can be participatory in this progress and to really get more progress done versus being a single voice. Join a board, and then you have more, more voices behind you and more access to those resources. I also want to remind people about the, the GLEWA program. It is, it is only for people that are, it's only for part of our community, unfortunately. So you have to check your availability, but the applications did open January 5th, so you can go right on. I've posted the information. I think the city has posted, and if they haven't, I'll get it over to them so they can post as well. You can go on there and check your, see if you're within the drain system for those grants, and it's on your private property. So what a better way to really make the most of things than to get somebody else to pay for it, right? I also want to tell everybody to continue to communicate with us, work with us. Teamwork is how we get the most stuff done, and I think that we are always stronger together. And we have a really unique situation here in Hazel Park that our elected officials work really well together, and that is not the same in all cities. I have friends that are on many other councils, and I listen to their distress daily, and I am so grateful for the people that I get to work with in this community and how hard we all work for our community. And, and I just, I'm, I'm looking forward to the growth that we have coming, so that's it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm excited. I'm revitalized that the democratic process works. People get up here and talk. We don't see many people here that often, and it's exciting to see that our residents are, do care, not just nearly to trees, but other issues that's out there in our community. That is what we're about. I have a business in town. People come in here all the time. I'll switch hats. It doesn't matter. If I got the time to spend with you, I will. But I have a lot of people come in here and drop by. Hey, Mike, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? And I bring it up to Mr. Klobuchar, my other council members, and we talk about it. Sometimes it goes through, sometimes it don't. But we try to make the best of everything we have. We all agree to disagree, as Alyssa Sullivan said. We all, her and I differ on different subjects all the time, and so does Andy Lucero and Luke Londo. We, but we come together for the betterment of our community, and that's what we are about, working as a team. We, as residents, we're all residents here, we're just elected. Who cares, right? We have to work together. We'll find a way. The tree thing, let's figure it out. We're such a work in progress. We've been working on it through the years. It's gotten better than it was when it first started. Now maybe we can make a little change here, a little tweak there, maybe make it a little better. But the tree scape, it will come back, and it's just going to take a little time. Let's just be a little patient, work through it. And I want to have the safety of the seniors, the young people, walking down our sidewalks and going to those corners with those wheelchairs and those walkers. Yeah, I got elderly parents, my wife does. She's still, my wife's mother still lives on Davie. She's 88 years old. Thank God she's able to walk good, but there's days I have to go over and help her out of the house when she wants to come over for Sunday dinner or something. And my parents, I just moved back because they could not be where they're at, because we need to be in a community where it's walkable, with access, handicap accessibility, where things are more equally advantaged here for the people that need those services. We provide services for police and fire. We have two- and three-minute response times for the elderly and the young, the young children that need those services and us as young adults, that we need to have those services out there for everybody. And that's what we are all about here. We provide it with our budget. We set the goals and objectives here as city council to set those budgets up, to be able to provide those budgets for the police department, the fire department, and that's why you pay those milages too. Okay? You pay those milages for the fire department. We have 14 mills on here for our fire, fire and police department, when we had bad times and then the downturn in economic in 2010. Those residents saw that what was important to them was our city, the fire and police. That is a big part here. That is a big part of our budget. But without them, we wouldn't have the protections and feel safe when walking down the street in the middle of the night. I don't have a problem walking down John R. in the middle of the night. I live on the south end of town. I, people know me around here, and I know other people. We all, hey, Mike, how you doing? It's not, it's nice to walk down the street. You got, I'm sure everybody here has the same feeling in their neighborhood as well. Where else are you going to go to get that? This is a friendly city, and it always will be. And I thank you for your time. Motion to adjourn. We need an executive.